And welcome to our regular city council meeting for January 6th, 2021. Let me just say Happy New Year to all the council and everyone involved. From council to city staff and our guests tonight and all of Canby. I am thankful that 2020 has ended. I don't think 2021 has started too much differently than 20 ended, but I am optimistic that it'll end in a much better situation than what we started. So first on the agenda this evening is a presentation. We have council president Tim Dale leaving the council. He's hanging up his, what are you hanging up? Tim, you're the lavish lifestyle of being a council president.
Yes, and maybe some liquor and anti-anxiety meds.
And you're gaining back all sorts of free time.
We'll see.
Well, I know that we're not doing this in person, but I first let me, I have a beautiful plaque to present you with. It just says, "In recognition and appreciation of your years of service on the Canby City Council and Urban Renewal Agency, and for your untiring dedication and commitment toward the betterment of the city of Canby this fine day, January 2021." I know that there's a couple of counselors have reached out and said that they have some comments to make, so I will make mine brief. Tim, thank you. I appreciate, we didn't know each other well, I think when we started this adventure and I think it's safe to say that you're one of my best friends. And I have appreciated working side by side with you these eight years as mayor and being on council with you as well. You've been a tremendous help, tremendous supporter. You've been, you are a huge fan of Canby and you, you didn't, you always stuck to your, your heart. No matter what it brought and you've always stayed to your convictions and I've always appreciated that about you. I enjoyed our ability to be able to work side by side and, you know, call a spade a spade and move on and, and get some really great things done for our community. And it's been great. And I think probably you've kept me more in check than I've kept you in check on some things, but I've appreciated that. And I, and I look forward to a long friendship, sir. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I know Counselor Parker, you had some words that you wanted to say.
Yes, and actually the events of the day kind of taken away my breath, so I left him a private message. Tim, I hope you got that.
I did, thank you. It's very dear to me. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Spoon?
Tim, I've only had four years with you, but I want to thank you for your service to the community. You've been a stellar partner and I appreciate your passion for knowledge and, you know, really understanding what's happening and forming a conclusion and an answer and problem solving with me. I really appreciate that. And I guess, I guess I'll be the new nerd on council now, but you'll be missed very much with all your data and understanding and your deep knowledge about how everything works. I appreciate you and I, my family wants to thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Sarah.
Counselor Hensley? Cannot hear you. Nope.
They're muted.
Are you guys muted? Nope, still can't hear you.
Well, when the judge shakes their hands, we'll know it's official, right?
Yes.
There we hear something.
Thank you, Melissa. We had some technical difficulties here. Anyway, Tim, I think I've known you longer than anybody on the council and since our kiddos are in kindergarten, 15, 16 years now. So I've longer appreciated your friendship than you as a mentor, but that is what you turned into. You've been a good sounding board and a good partner in our community service and I thank you for everything. Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, can I say something?
Sure can, Joe.
Hey, thank you. Tim was one of the original folks, as there's still a few of you left who actually hired me. One of the better bosses I've ever had, I would say the best, but you're all still in the room, right? No, you're, you're a fantastic person to work for and work with and just a tremendous community leader and you will be missed.
Thank you, Joe.
Counselor Barwick?
Hopefully you can hear me, this is coming through. Tim, have you ever been down to the Wooden Chuchula Farm and seen those big, huge shoes that nobody can ever fit into? That is exactly, that is exactly what you're doing by leaving us here. You're leaving some big, huge shoes that will be impossible to fill. It has been such an honor to get to know you over the last couple of years. I too consider you one of my closest friends, having only known you a couple of years, you're just that guy that is always there for everybody.
And Sean, you froze. The big, the big finish.
What I said that probably didn't come through is, what I said that probably didn't come through is lucky for me, I have your phone number and I know where you live. So I will continue to reach out to you and if you don't like that, you've got to move and change your phone number. Everything you've done and thank you for your service to Canby, you will be greatly missed and we appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay. That covers, that covers the veteran crew, I think, so.
A few comments, Mister Mayor, if I can?
Absolutely, sir.
See if I can get through them. I actually wrote them out, which is unusual for me, so just to help me make sure to get through them. Just in case you're watching, Rick Robinson, this is for you and I really hope you're not watching and instead are enjoying retirement and abandon. But Rick, I want to say you've owed me with your integrity and your deep wisdom. But most of all, I made a brother who I can trust with life's deepest secrets and pains. And the rock of Gibraltar tonight, Rick and I got to walk through some things together. And even though we rarely talk anymore, I know I can always call you. And so, thank you, Rick. Joe, I gained a friend in a kindred spirit. I am ashamed to tell the public how many hours of city attorney time I have consumed on the phone talking with Joe. But you are blessed, Canby. He is a man of wisdom beyond his years. And I will, I'll deeply miss the deep discussions that we had that ranged from the silliest quirks of law all the way to the fundamentals of human dignity and justice. So, thank you, Joe, and I look forward to a long friendship with you, especially since you're so much younger than I am. Sean, likewise, you know, it was tough on me. I said I wrote this out, but here I am already going after it. I had this realization one day, Greg, that you and I are the old guys on council. Remember when you were always the young guy? Yeah, somewhere along there that happened. Sean, another young guy, thank you. I've made a great friend and you've taught me a lot about compassion and generosity. And those are two qualities we desperately need in leadership and in life. So, thank you and I look forward to many, many, many more great times with you. Today that our grandchildren will enjoy, today that our grandchildren will enjoy. Thank you for that. I want you to know that likewise, outside of the world of politics, I deeply appreciate the personal concern that you've shown me through life's tough times. And we've got to share a few things there, thank you. I really should have liquored up before this, Mister Mayor. Maybe someone will call me after this is over. Tracy, as you said, you were a sister before we got into politics, back when our now grown children were very wee. And here they are, all out there adulting and living life and jobs and college. I will always admire your autism, your passion and your self-sacrifice. And it has frequently been an encouragement to me when the fight got weary. Thank you, I appreciate that and look forward to many more times down the road. Breathe, breathe. Mister Mayor? You know my feelings for you, brother. And I won't put those on display anymore than I already am. I do want Canby to know what a great honor it's been to serve with you. And under your inspiration, your vision, your determination and your leadership. It's been my privilege to help you make Canby a better place over this past decade. And I want Canby to know how blessed it is to have you for what history will surely show to be one of its finest mayors. Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Tim.
To Matt English and Matt Dale, who try as we tried and tried and tried, we cannot find out that we're actually related to each other. We, we look so much alike, it's incredible that there's not a blood relationship there. We're both tall, slim, fit, we both are runners, but Matt Dale, my dear neighbor and friend Matt English, who was a friend before I got on council and especially Chief Jim. Thank you for the friendships that will last forever. And thank you for being there on those crazy times when my family desperately needed you guys. It's been everything from getting hauled off to OHSU trauma centers to finding that smoke detector that wouldn't shut up when my girls were home alone. So, thank you so much. And of course, Brett and George and Nate and my friends at Canby PD, likewise, thank you for the friendships and the things we've shared and for being our guardians. You can tell that I hope, as you've gotten to know me, that I'm not much about reciting past accomplishments. I'm a terrible resume writer for myself, because in the end, those things aren't important as much as it is the people and the relationships. That's what truly matter. And in the end, good government is about serving people the best we can with what we have, walking in the light we have at the time. And so, Canby, thank you, it's been a privilege. There's very, very much I will miss and a few things I won't miss so much about the job. I do deeply regret that I have to take a pause from this form of public service. Who knows what the future will be? I was so close to, I only had 17 more years to beat Walt's record. But who knows what the future may bring? I may be able to rejoin you down the road. So, my encouragement is stay together, major on the majors, minor on the minors, serve people and may God bless each and every one of you and the city of Canby. See you soon.
Thanks, Tim. Well, I don't know how to follow that at all, Tim, thank you. You will be missed.
Move to adjourn, no joking.
Well, with all of that being said, it's, we move into our swearing in ceremony. A little bit different than in years past because of, I don't know, this little thing called COVID. We have, we're kind of divvied up here in terms of how the swearing in will go. We do have the judge in the council chambers, because there's a couple of us that wanted to be sworn in in council chambers. So, thank you Judge for being here, it's good to see you. And then we have three on Zoom. So, what I would like to do is let's swear in Counselor Hensley first, so that she has time to get back to where she needs to be to be able to link in and get ready for tonight's remaining festivities. And then we'll move through the Zoom group in terms of, Melissa, do we have any methodology here? Or just follow kind of what's on the agenda? How do you want to do that over, over Zoom?
You can do it however you'd like, Mayor.
Okay, well, I will go last. Just make sure that everyone's got time to get back where they need to go. So, we will go, we will start again, Counselor Hensley, and then we'll swear in Counselor Spoon and then Counselor Bangs or soon to be Counselor Elect Bangs and Counselor Elect Tibbles and then myself. So, I will turn it over to the city hall there and we'll go from there.
Okay. Where do you need me to be on camera?
If you could step back for a second, then do you want the script for Counselor Hensley?
Script is the same.
He probably can say it in his state.
So, all right, six feet, right?
That's about right.
Okay, if you would raise your right hand, please. And please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tracy Hensley.
Being duly elected to the office?
Being duly elected to the office.
Of city councillor of the city of Canby.
As city councillor of the city of Canby.
At the general election on November 3rd, 2020.
At the general election, November 3rd, 2020.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector of the city of Canby.
That I am a qualified elector of the city of Canby.
And that I have resided in the city of Canby, Oregon.
And that I have resided in the city of Canby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior.
Immediately prior.
To November 3rd, 2020.
To November 3rd, 2020.
And that I will support the constitution and laws.
I will support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, so if you can sign this. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. All right, Melissa, I'm going to make my exit so I can get back home and zoom in.
So, who are we doing next?
I think he said me.
Yep, Counselor Spoon.
Yeah, and just a quick question, Judge, should I come in tomorrow to sign the form or how would you like that handled?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
I can even say, as a, as a practical matter, we did, we did extra research on the law just to make sure. And our charter calls for the oath to be taken, but it doesn't say necessarily a signature makes it real. So, you actually doing it will make it real. It'll be cool to have it on file, so.
I'm happy to, I'll coordinate with Melissa and set up a time to come in and sign it.
But you'll be official, having orally done your oath, as will everybody, so that all of your actions after this will take effect.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification, Joe.
Sure. Okay, so if you would raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Sarah Spoon.
Being duly elected to the office of the city of councillor.
Can you say that one more time? Being duly elected to the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
At the general election on November 3rd, 2020.
At the general election on November 3rd, 2020.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector.
That I am a qualified elector.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
And that I have resided in.
And that I have resided in.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior.
Immediately prior.
To the November 3rd, 2020 election.
To the November 3rd, 2020 election.
And that I will support the constitution and laws.
And that I will support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm muted, sorry.
So, who's next? I have Jordan Tibbles and Christopher Bangs.
Christopher Bangs.
Christopher Bangs.
That's me.
That's you, all right. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Bangs.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of city councillor.
To the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
At the general election.
At the general election.
On November 3rd, 2020.
On November 3rd, 2020.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector.
That I am a qualified elector.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
And that I have resided in.
And that I have resided in.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior to November 3rd, 2020.
Immediately prior to November 3rd, 2020.
And that I will support the constitution and laws.
And I will support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor of the city of Canby.
Of the office of city councillor of the city of Canby.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then Jordan Tibbles?
Yes.
There we go. You're the one with the puppy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jordan Tibbles.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To this office of city councillor.
To the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
At the general election on November 3rd, 2020.
At the general election of November 3rd, 2020.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector.
That I am a qualified elector.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
And that I have resided in.
That I have resided in.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
The city of Canby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior to November 3rd, 2020.
Immediately prior to November 3rd, 2020.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
Of the city of Canby, Oregon.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So, I've signed all of these oaths. You'll have to work it out with the city and they've got them all for you, so. And then that leaves the mayor, right?
Hi Judge.
Well, hello.
I'm Ben.
Better than I deserve, aren't you, Ben?
Probably better than I deserve.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
Glad to be here this night.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm served.
I state your name.
I, Brian Hudson.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
Of the city of Canby.
Of the city of Canby.
At the general election.
At the general election.
On November 3, 2020.
On November 3, 2020.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector.
That I am a qualified elector.
Of the City of Canby.
Of the City of Canby.
And that I have resided in.
And that I have resided in.
The City of Canby, Oregon.
The City of Canby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior.
Immediately prior.
To November 3, 2020.
November 3, 2020.
And that I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Of the United States and of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
For the Office of Mayor.
The Office of Mayor.
Of the City of Canby, Oregon.
Of the City of Canby, Oregon.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your honor, thank you very much.
Well, if you're welcome.
Gonna go back to my lines soon. Thank you. I'll have to have a cup of coffee, you guys. I love it.
Well, while we wait, I can just say that I feel a lot more influential now than I did just a few minutes ago.
We all feel that influence, Chris, already. I know we're waiting on Counselor Hensley, so we'll wait till she's able to log in and connect. So, we'll give her some more time here to do that.
Hey, Mayor, if you don't mind, I haven't, I don't think myself or anyone has got the opportunity to address the citizens of Canby for the newly elected. Would we be able to do that at this time?
Yeah, we can start doing that while Counselor Hensley's on her way, absolutely, so.
Okay.
If you'd like to start that off, Jordan, that'd be fine.
Yep, so, citizens of Canby, I just want to thank you for honoring me and trusting me to represent you on city council. My wife and I are truly blessed to start our own family in the community that she was raised in, and I love so much. And I look forward to serving you to the best of my abilities, and may God bless you, and may God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Bangs, did you have anything, or?
I would just like to say the exact same thing that Jordan said. In all seriousness, I really look forward to working all of you. It's going to be great to be part of the same team. And I hope that the City of Canby benefits from our working together as a team. I am also very appreciative of the voters in Canby for sending all seven of us, but four of us now, and the previous three, to the city council and entrusting us in this responsibility. So, thank you, and I'm really looking forward to our future together.
Great, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Counselor Spoon, anything at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Citizens of Canby, thank you so much for trusting me again with another four years of service to the community. I'm from here, I was raised here, and I love this community very deeply. When I had a choice of where to raise my own family, it's the only place I wanted to come because I care very much about it. And I know that it's the best place to raise a family and to live. And I'm looking forward to cooperating and partnering with the other members of council to improve livability and to improve our infrastructure and make Canby work for you as much as it should.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hensley, did you want to say anything at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I have heartfelt gratitude for this community. I thank everyone who supported my campaign and voted for me, sending me back to the council again. Just, I'm just really humbled by everyone's trust and faith in my representation of them, and very appreciative. I love this town, and I continue to work hard for it, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Close out our swearing-in ceremony as well to say thank you. Thank you to citizens of Canby that, this is yours nine and 10, so fifth term as mayor, and I take that very seriously. It is not, is not a job that is for the faint of heart, nor is being a city councilor for the faint of heart. There is a lot that goes into this role, and it's not just two Wednesdays a month. There's a lot of prep work, there's a lot of conversation, there's a lot of feeling and heart that goes into what we do, week in and week out. So, thank you for entrusting us to represent you in that way. To the new councilors, welcome aboard. Very glad that you are part of this council. I know that you all have enjoyed my conversations with Jordan, and Chris and I had the opportunity to spend a couple hours over the weekend, and I really appreciate the time to get least a little bit more, get to know you a little bit more than I have. So, looking forward to what you will bring to the council. To the existing councilors, re-elected and those not, don't have to do that for another two years. You know the work that lays ahead of us. As Council President, former Council President Dale, I have to say, former now, stated earlier that we, and as Counselor Parker always is very good at, is we need to look down the road. It's not just the tail end or the nose of the car, we have to look 30 miles down the road to see what's coming and try to anticipate that. I think the idea of planning and looking for a community that are generations from now is important, and that's hard to do. It is not easy to look down the road and try to figure out what will Canby look like 20 years from now or 30 years from now. We have had the luxury as a council to be executing some tremendous plans put forth by, you know, previous mayors and councils. It is our time to do those same kinds of things, the same kind of planning, the same kinds of conversations, to be prepared for what a future Oregon and a future Canby would look like. So, to the new councilors, learn, ask lots of questions, there are no stupid answers, and there are no stupid questions. Be students of the city. You have a ton of resources in city staff, you have a ton of resources on the council, and you have tons of resources just here on the screen, and people that are willing to help and support us in what we need to accomplish. So, we do have some big things to tackle and plan for, and I'm looking forward to it, so thank you. Moving into citizen input and community announcements, we have a couple of guests here this evening. So, this is an opportunity for the audience members to address the city council on items that are not necessarily on the agenda. Each person will be given three minutes to speak and address the council. Staff and the city councilors and the city staff will do the best to try to answer the questions right here and now. If not, we'll get to answers as quickly soon thereafter. Again, if those of you watching at home, if you would like to speak virtually or in person to the city council, please email or call our city recorder by 5:00 PM on the day of our city council meetings, and we will make sure that you are on the agenda for community input and community announcements. The person you would reach out to would be Melissa Visset, and that is or you can call 503-266-0733 to get on the agenda. On my list of people, first up I have is Valerie Byrd, is she joining us yet this evening? No, we will circle back on that one. Next on my list is Mindy Monacucco, wanting to give some public input about the survey regarding the development of the logging road extension. Mindy, hello.
Hi, thank you for having me, and thank you all for serving on council. And as mayor, I can't imagine all the time that you put in and your dedication to our community, and I thank you all. So, I am Mindy Monacucco, and I am chairperson for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Citizen Advisory Committee. And we have been working with Parametrics, a planning firm, on the development plan. There is no development plan yet, but putting together a development plan for the traverso section of the logging road extension. So, the Mulholland Forest Road is the official name of the logging road, so we refer to it as MFR. So, we just want to encourage the public and all of our community organizations, anyone who has an interest in the logging road and suggestions, concerns, about and ideas for what would make for a successful extension of the logging road. This will literally double the length of the logging road trail, and so we want to hear from as many of the public as we can. So, the opportunity is to go online, and you can find that at mfrtrail.org. And you can see what our initial findings have been, kind of what's, what that trail's looking like initially, and then you can put in your comments and concerns, and we encourage everyone to share it with your friends and family and neighbors and community organizations. And we've been reaching out to the, a variety of stakeholders, and most especially the adjacent property owners, who we want to make sure are, that we are good neighbors to them, so, thank you.
Mindy, thank you for coming, I appreciate that. Can you give the website again? I tip my hat to you and your board for going and making it happen, and hustling and going and getting a sizable grant to help get this planning process moving. So, congratulations and thank you, and we will spread this around and get people to give some input.
Thank you, and before I go, I want to thank Calvin Lessor for, he is our contact person for that, and he's been doing a wonderful job with grant applications. We're looking at applying for an ODOT grant for community pathways so that we can have all users on a paved path. So, hopefully we can get some help with that, with future grants to get things built and signed correctly and such. So, thank, future grants to get things built and signed correctly and such, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mindy, appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night. Next, I have Greg Perez about the crab dinner. You're muted, Mr. Perez. Greg, you're muted. Greg, you're muted, Greg.
There we go.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, city administrators, I'm Greg Perez, I'm one of the members of the Knights of Columbus here, Council 3484. And I want to let everybody know that the Canby crab feed, the Knights of Columbus Canby Crab Dinner, is going to be held February 6 at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds. This one is going to be a drive-through pickup. We've organized everything to where everything is online. We're following all of the guidelines from the state and health departments for the COVID, and we are going to condense it to where there's not going to be a lot of auction items and so forth, but we do have a few of those, we have the shopping spree like we normally do, and we are also doing a paddle race, a special paddle race for a family of, actually, there's five children and the wife, and she's a single parent. Their home burnt down, her job where she worked also burnt down, and they have no place to live, they're homeless. They left with nothing but the clothes on their back. So, we're doing a paddle race for them, we're working with the agencies out of state, the state of Oregon, to try to find them a place to live, because right now they're living in a one-room motel with the six of them. So, we're trying to do as much as we can to raise funds for them, and raise funds for Share the Warmth, Canby Pregnancy Center, St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank, so we can take care of our community along with that. And that's what this whole thing is all about, the Knights of Columbus and KC Charities, is to raise funds to take care of our community. So, just let everybody know, it's on February 6. Once you go online, you'll see times to pick up. You pick up the time that you want to pick up, because there's three or four different slots. So, it's crab or cordon bleu. If there are not any questions, I will be done.
So, Mr. Perez, thank you, sir. I know that this is a huge fundraiser that the Knights of Columbus puts on, and I know that it's all about the funds going back into local nonprofits and whatnot, so really appreciate the effort on this every year, it's a huge turnout and whatnot. So, the website that people can go to, is it, again, is what?
The website is unite, U-K-N-I-G-H-T.org backslash question mark CNO equals 3484. There's also a QR code on the main sign, the four-foot-by-10-foot sign by the Thai restaurant. You can hit that with your phone, and it'll bring you right to the site right away, to the ordering page and so forth. This, starting this weekend, Friday and Saturday until the end of the month, we will be selling tickets and raffle tickets for the dinner at Thriftway from 12 to 6, Saturday and Sunday till the end of the month.
Great, thank you, Greg, appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, councilors, for sticking in there and working together. We appreciate you, and I really appreciate all of you. So, thank you for your work, and bye, Tim.
Thanks, Greg.
First, Mayor, and to Tim Dale, who I've grown to know as a citizen of Canby for the last, for quite a while, so. But thank you for the time that you commit back to the community. The, yes, this morning, 2:30 this morning, we were dispatched to report a train derailment down at South End Road and Highway 99. When we arrived, we found 14-railroad cars that were totally off the tracks and upside down in various positions. Fortunately, nobody was hurt. The engineer sustained a kind of a bruised shoulder, and the actual locomotives themselves went off the tracks but stayed upright. There was one of the train cars on the bridge that crosses the creek that was up on its side, and that's where it stopped. However, the train stopped all the way down Highway 99, just past Bill Kenner's house on 99, blocked access to all those houses there. My hats off to the Pacific Railroad, they did a wonderful job. They brought forces. They brought forces in there like you wouldn't believe and they hope to have that cleared up within 48, 60 hours. And they go by minutes because of the amount of money that is lost by every minute that the railroad is closed. The cars had tipped over a primary lumberyard lumber cars. And the cause of it was a tree that had come down and angled across and caught the edge of one of the railroad cars, which started a chain reaction for the other 13 cars that derailed behind the locomotive. But fortunately, it happened in a spot that if there was going to be a derailment, that's a good spot because there's a place for the people to get in there and to operate the cars and to, to do the repairs that are necessary. And we are very fortunate that type of vaccines. And that is police officers, firefighters, healthcare workers, retirement home workers, anybody that is associated with that. And we were able to get a majority of the Canby Police Department vaccinated as well as the judge and the prosecutor and some other people from the city. You know, we look at you as a very viable and needed partner with the fire district. And we also vaccinated the Aurora Fire Department, the Mulholland Fire Department, Mulholland Police Department, as well as Colton Fire Department. So, and then, so we didn't waste any because we had a few vials left over. We were able to take those to a local Canby clinic for the doctor to start dispersing so that none of the, absolutely, absolutely none of the shots were wasted. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate the update on both fronts. I know it's a huge push right now on the vaccination front to get those out. Mayor's business. Happy New Year. Six days into it and, you know, I think the future looks bright. At least that's my optimism for the year. Not a lot necessarily to report on. There is no C4 meeting this month, just with transitions of, we've got, there's a lot of transition across the county in mayors and city councilors. So we're letting swearing-ins and things like that occur and we'll regroup in February. And that agenda, agenda is pretty much, I think, going to be around conversation about the upcoming session, short session, and what pieces might, I guess it's not a short session, it's the long one this year. And those pieces that will be brought up and trying to take some positions on as a coordinating committee. The other piece, again, didn't have anything in December to report on, the Region One Transportation, sorry, Area Commission on Transportation, Region One. I have nothing new to report regarding conversation around the tolling project, what's going on on that. I'm sure once we get here, going into the new year, we'll start to have some more dialogue on that. On the Parks Board front, they've been busy. They have been lots of conversation, lots of really great things happening with the group. They're had a great conversation with our city manager and just in terms of talking about the upcoming RFP for the Parks Master Plan and then also discussion on looking at what can we address now? What are some low-hanging fruit options that could be looked at that's, we already know is in the park, our current park plan, Park Master Plan? And what can we pull from that and start to work on? So I'm very excited about that. Like I said, almost met with the entire council here over the last week or so, just gearing up for the new year as well as just the, the new faces on, on the council. So thank you for carving out time for that. I really do appreciate that. And then finally, just for you all to just put on your radar, talking with Scott Archer, our city administrator, and with our city recorder, looking at a council retreat. We're looking at probably, we're going to be looking at either February 20th or February 27th. Our city recorder will be sending out a doodle poll to see which one works best for everyone. It'll probably be our usual nine to three situation. We're looking at, hopefully, we're a little bit further down the road here with some of the vaccination pieces and whatnot. If we can socially distance properly in one of our many conference rooms throughout the city, maybe come together and do it in that way versus over Zoom. I think we could be productive in that way. But again, it's, you know, I'll look at the comfort level of, of the group on that as well as where we're at from our current COVID, I guess, level. So stay, stay tuned on that. Talking with our, with Scott here this evening. We did attempt to do this last year, ran into some unforeseen circumstances and had to pull the plug on it. But we do still have, according to Scott, the, that person that did the initial work and whatnot. So some of that framework and some of those pieces are still there. So that's good. So we'll be able to hopefully continue and just build on that with the new councilors and just, you know, kind of.
Hope that you have a fantastic 2020, 2021. The only thing I have in terms of liaison reports is that Bridging Cultures is starting their English classes again. I believe they're doing them by Zoom. But they were not doing them for quite a while. So if, if you know anyone or if you are someone that is English language learner and would like to participate in the English language classes through Bridging Cultures, those are now available. I actually believe they started Monday. I'm not sure if you can join late or not. However, they will be doing them again in just a, you know, they do them every eight or so weeks, they start a new round. So at least they are restarted and they are available to the, the people that live here.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Counselor Parker, anything?
Wanted to echo congratulations to Councilors Spoon and Hensley for their reelection and to you, Mayor, and also to Chris and Jordan and offer any assistance that I can. And especially in taking ideas to policy. Now, that is our job here is to come up with policies. So I think I had to learn the hard way when I had ideas is trying to turn them into a policy and budget. So to the extent that I can help there, please call me. And finally, just a personal note, a few terrifying minutes this afternoon. Most of you know that my son works on Capitol.
The news today and it, definitely not, not something I think I would have expected to see. So I'm glad that Ricky's, Ricky's well. Thank you. Counselor Varway?
Sorry, I'm used to going last, so I wasn't prepared to turn my mute off just yet. I really don't have anything tonight. I, again, just wanted to congratulate our new councilors and those who were reelected. 2021, I think is going to be a great year. It's going to be as good of a year as we allow it to be. And I think that if we all, you know, just put our heads together and look to the future and make the best of it, it will be a wonderful year. So looking forward to working with, with you both, Chris and Jordan as new councilors and with everybody else as current councilors. I just am really looking forward to this year. I have nothing as far as the liaison reports.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I likewise don't have much in the way of liaison reports, but will follow suit in congratulating Counselors Spoon and yourself for your reelection and welcoming Counselors Bangs and Tibbles. Looking forward to working with you. Happy New Year, Canby.
I guess we could now say instead of Counselors Elect, that it is actually Counselor Bangs and Counselor Tibble. So, yes, very good. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes of the December 2nd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting, as well as the liquor license request of El Chiosco Deli located at 925 Southwest 4th Avenue.
I will second.
Okay. Now, Counselors Tibbles and Bangs, if, again, consent agendas are generally pretty boilerplate in terms of what, we don't generally use it as a, too much of a catch-all. I know a lot of commissions and councils will dump a lot of things into a consent agenda for approval. We do not. We separate those out often. I think though, both of you may have been there listening, but I think though, both of you may have been there listening, but not in official capacity. So it'd be something that would be, if you decided to abstain, it would be totally appropriate to do so. Or if you decided to approve, that's fine as well because they're there. I don't think there's any changes or edits that need to be made in those. Are there any councilors, any changes or whatnot?
I don't see any.
Not seeing any. Okay. So the motion's been made by Counselor Hensley and seconded by Counselor Varway to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the December 2nd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and a liquor license request by El Chiosco Deli located at 925 Southwest 4th Avenue. Any further comments on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
One, two, three, four, five. Those are opposed? Extension? One extension. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the selection of council president and council liaison assignments. So generally, so just touch on a few things. Get my notes out here. So before we, again, had, operated with almost everybody before the council meeting and had some conversation about hopes, dreams and fears on liaison roles. I just want to, it's something that I wanted to share about our commissions and liaison roles. Basically, basically, as a liaison to our boards and committees, you are just that. We're there to observe, we're there to provide background on maybe the topic at hand from the council's perspective. We are to report back to the council, bring back maybe requests for information, requests for next steps, things like that. We are not to make motions, we're not to get entangled necessarily in conversation. I should say not too entangled. I'll leave it at that because I know some of us are excited about our liaison roles and we get involved. But ideally, we're not there to make motions and, and, and/or second motions in those regards. So it's there to, to report back to the council. If you can't make a liaison, make one of their meetings, it, it happens. There's a lot, like I said, we, we cover a lot of territory as a council. I do ask that you make every effort to connect with the chair of that committee or board so that you can report back from the previous meeting as to what's been going on or if there's pieces that we need to address or bring in into conversation as a council. That's really kind of the, the crux there on that piece. Our city policies and operating guidelines, basically our liaisons are not voting members of committees. Liaisons will clarify personal opinion and differentiate, differentiate those from the council's opinion. So that's really kind of what our role is as liaisons. So some of these have stayed the same, some have changed. What I'd like to do is, and I don't know if we've done this in the past, but you know, it's a new year, it's a new, new time. But I'd like to run these for the year and then in January shuffle the deck again and, and reallocate lead roles, liaison positions, pardon me, so that we're all getting exposure and get different perspectives. So, so look at that for next January when we come off of our first meeting in January of next year. So just running through some of these pieces. So the Bike and Ped Committee, Counselor Parker, I'd love for you to stay on in, in that capacity there with that group. Our Budget Committee, we vote on that, the chair for that when we all get together for our first budget meeting, which we do generally come the springtime. The Canby Public Library Board, Counselor Bangs, would that be suitable for you? Okay. Canby Utility Board, Counselor Tibbles. Heritage and Landmark Commission, Counselor Parker. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I will be staying on as that liaison for the time being. Planning Commission, Counselor Varway. Traffic Safety Commission, Counselor Hensley. The Transit Advisory Committee, Counselor Spoon, if you wouldn't mind staying on that one. I appreciate that. Thank you. Other liaison pieces. Bridging Cultures, I know Sarah, that, that's been something that you've been heading up and Jordan had expressed some interest in that. Is that, are you still wanting to be very much part of that liaison group there?
I'm happy to do it, but I think it benefits all of us if we're well-rounded. So if it's something that Counselor Tibbles would like to do for a year, I will support and encourage him to, to meet those people and, and be a part of that community.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So Bridging Cultures, Counselor Tibbles, that'll be yours as well. Canby Adult Center, Sarah, I know that's a day one, that's a group that meets in the day. And that is challenging, I know, for a number of us with day jobs and things like that. I know Sarah, you've been in that capacity as well.
Parker took it over because of work. So I, about, Greg, was it about a year ago, a year and a half ago? Yeah.
I missed that in my notes. Okay. Okay. Greg, or is that still, okay, thank you, sir. Canby Fire District, I know Sean, you, sorry, Counselor Varway, you very much interested in that still. Canby School District, Counselor Bangs, I know that you're a teacher there at the school and involved there. It seemed like a natural piece for you to be able to, for the time being, report back on anything school board related that might pertain to the city. Does that suit you? Fine?
Yeah, I do know the principals already.
So you might know a few people over there. Clackamas County Fair Board, as far as I know, Counselor Parker, you're still a board member, are you not?
No, I did not apply for a second term.
Oh, you're not on there anymore?
About trying to get better communications going and the reason to have one of us on the board. But I, I now think that we, we've actually got a structural thing where the staff is communicating. So that, I don't see that necessary.
Okay, so what maybe we'll do then for now for city staff is maybe we'll just, we'll strike that from the list of other liaison pieces.
On is, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It's a great, it's a great organization.
Great, thank you. The next four pieces are the neighborhood associations. And so in the past, we just kind of kept those with councilors that were kind of in those neighborhoods. So Riverside has been Tracy and I think it still will say is Trace, Counselor Hensley, pardon me. Northeast Canby Neighborhood Association has been Counselor Parker. Southeast Canby Neighborhood Association. Counselor Bangs, thoughts on being that position there?
I have no thoughts or, or like opposition either.
Okay. And then Southwest. Okay. And then Southwest Camby Neighborhood Association, that's been you, Sarah, is that still good to keep you in that position there for now?
Yes, that's been a delight to be a part of, too. So I'd be happy to stay there.
If that's been the case. And then, if that's been the case. And then finally, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. So I have been the liaison to that, and then Councilor Hensley has been the alternate in that capacity for the time being. We'll keep those as they are. The, those of you that are kind of changing roles or whatnot, especially for Councilor Tibbles and Councilor Bangs, please connect and share information about those committees and whatnot that they need to get brought up to speed on. It would be nice if there would be a nice handoff at the next meeting. Zoom in with them if at all possible, introduce them and, you know, say fond farewell's or see laters or whatever. Just make sure that we have a smooth handoff. Again, it's about making sure that the boards and committees are represented, and that we give them an opportunity to communicate and with the council. So that's what it's really about in that regards. Questions or comments on that piece? Okay. Next on the agenda this evening is talking about the Council President piece. So this is, just gonna lay out a couple of things here regarding this conversation before we jump into it. This is, this is an unusual event for us in the fact that our Council President's spot is open. The whole time I've been on council, it's usually been a, we've just seen a carryover. Council President Dale did a great job as Council President, and before that was Council President Walt Daniels. So in the last, I will say the last month or longer, there's been a lot of passionate conversation about the Council President piece for our group. And so I just want to talk a little bit about that. And so I went to our city charter and our policies and procedures pieces, which they really kind of saying the same thing regarding the Council President. So the charter, President of the Council, at its first meeting after this charter takes effect and thereafter, at its first meeting of each audit numbered year, the council by vote shall elect a president from its membership. In the mayor's absence from a council meeting, the president shall preside over that meeting. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the function of the office, the president shall act as mayor. So that's what's in our charter, and that's what's in the policies and procedures of our council. I bring that up for the new members as well as a reminder for our current counselors, as well as the people viewing in. It also, the role is, as it stated there in the end, if the mayor is unable to perform the functions of the office. So if I move, because I get a dream job with the Cleveland Browns and need to go move to Ohio, or I get killed or captured, can, you know, because of a hostile takeover of the city of Camby, and I'm traded away for goods and services of another kind, can that person step in and fill the role of the mayor? What it is not, and this has been a big piece of conversation, it is not an automatic because we've been here the longest. It's not a resume builder, it's not a grooming for mayor, it's not an automatic to be the urban renewal chair, it's not about political ideology, it's not a feather in one's cap to say, look what I did. It doesn't give you access to more information or different information. There is no Council President Office with a gold key at City Hall. I have had the opportunity to work with two very good council presidents in Walt Daniels and Tim Dale. Walt knew parliamentary rules and Robert's Rules of Order very well, as did Council President Dale. They can run a good meeting. Then also, they were tremendous resources for the council. You could probably look at both of them being historians as well of the council. Both were gracious and helpful and had great perspective. And as I said earlier, of Council President Dale, yes, we did become friends, we shared ideas. He did keep me in check more than I kept him in check. And he was involved so much because he became a friend and confidant. Ideally, and this is where I, I think that we're gonna have a struggle tonight, I don't know. Ideally, this should be really a unanimous decision in, in short order. I don't know if that's gonna be the case this evening. I review the role for the purpose of conversation, so that we all know what's, what the role is about. I don't think we had, under Council President Dale, I don't think there was a vote where it wasn't unanimous. For Council President Daniels, I know it was unanimous all the time. So tonight, we have three counselors that have expressed interest in being Council President. Councilor Hensley, Councilor Parker, and Councilor Varwig have all expressed an interest in being Council President. I would like to hope that this is not gonna go along political ideological lines in our conversation this evening, so that's why I did the review. It is about the ability to run a meeting in my absence. It's about the ability, if something were to happen and I can't make an event, maybe they step in, maybe they don't, maybe it's somebody else. There, like I, there's not a loss of information, it's not additional access. Ideally, it, the decision should lie, and I went over this with Joe, that it lies with the council. However you see fit is the, what that council is. I do make up that council as well. At the end of the day, I do believe that you, the city counselors, as the deciding authority, make that decision. I think as we're looking at who those people are, or who that person is, can run whatever that may be. So what I'd like to do, since there's three of you that want to be Council President, I would like each of you to maybe address, like, what it is or why it is that you feel that you want to be the Council President. And I'll start with Councilor Hensley.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an unusual way of doing this. Normally, it's done by nomination, so this is kind of strange. But at any rate, I have served the...
I believe Counselor Parker is having audio issues?
So Counselor-
So was I nominated to speak?
Yes, you were asked to speak on why it is that you want to be Council President.
Give me a thumbs up, Mayor, if you, that's, thank you. Well, the first reason is that I was asked. And secondly, you talk, talk, there we go, I'm back now. And second, secondly, you mentioned that the ability to run a meeting. I've been parliamentary for several organizations. I've worked professionally at the city, county, and state level. And I think I have a pretty good understanding of the city charter. And I have the time. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Varwig, why do you want to be Council President?
Thank you. Yeah, for me, it's less about wanting to be Council President and more about willing to be that person. I joined the city council several years ago, two years ago, and because I love Camby and I want to make a difference. And that's my purpose, my council, but the fact that we've stepped on the council and, you know, run for office are all qualified to serve in the role. Others, others want it, others really want it, and I think some might even see some power in it. So for me, like I said, it's less about wanting the role and I'm more about willing to serve in the role. So, yeah, it, it's not really about wanting it. So, and if that, I mean, if that answers the question, I don't know if it would be an appropriate time to make a motion. I'd be willing to make a motion for someone.
Just, I hear you.
Sure. No, no, I'll wait, I'll wait.
Yeah. To Counselor Hensley's point about this being unorthodox, absolutely it is. Because we've got two new council members that I don't know how well they know all the players that are involved. And I think that, yeah, my involvement, and this is where, I'm not gonna lie, I've had heartburn since the evening of November 3rd, I guess when we finally got results November 6th, knowing that the council, ideologically speaking, is split. And I, when we look at this particular piece, I really find it, I really do hope that this is not something that's gonna fall on ideological lines. And that's why, Counselor Hensley, I asked to put forth that question of why do you want to be the Council President? Because I think it's important for all of us to hear, you know, why that is, why I laid out what that role is. You know, I, I go back to my relationship with Council Pres- former Council President Dale. It's got to be where it was, because we had honest conversation, and we could share ideas. And we could bounce back and forth with each other some of those ideas. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna happen with the next Council President, you know. And so for me, I think it's looking at the group going, you know, who best fills that spot. I think somebody made the comment to me today about, well, being Council President also has an air of influence being the Council President. Okay, maybe it does, I don't know. I was never Council President, I can't speak to that. So, I don't know. So, I, my final comments before I open it up to your discussions is that many of you, a couple of you at least, maybe not the new gentleman on the council, have talked to me about the importance of being the counselor because your vote matters and you have a vote and you have power of the vote. If this runs ideological lines, you are relinquishing that power to me as your mayor. I don't mind having that power, but that's not what our city charter calls for, especially on something like this, where I think that knowing what the role is and what it may perceive to be are two different things. I will leave it, well, and I will final say with that real quick is, if it, if it comes out of the gate and we're going ideological lines, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be a no. We gotta figure it out where it's not an ideological piece. So I'm gonna leave it at that. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would have a motion, or if you would prefer discussion, be first, I'd, I'd be happy to do discussion. What would be your preference to keep it as?
Well, I mean, on the table is, Sarah, Counselor Spoon has nominated Councilor Parker to be Council President, and it's been seconded by Councilor Bangs. Discussion? Yes, Counselor Spoon.
Yeah, I'd like to explain a little bit why I think Greg is the, objectively, just the best nominee for Council President. So Greg has lived in Camby for 24 years. He's our most senior city counselor. He has, like you said, professional experience at the city, county, and state level. But most importantly, like you said, there are certain charter roles and responsibilities of Council President, but much like mayor, there are other roles you take on in terms of leadership. And I would like to think that our Council President can act as a leader and a mentor to all of us and help guide us all through, through whatever comes our way, as, just as you do, mayor. So he has 11, an 11-year history on council with proactive cooperation regardless of political opinion. And I have a couple of examples, though there are certainly dozens. One is that he worked with a former Council President Dale to preserve some high-value industrial land that staff had identified for future government building, which would have been a non-taxpaying building. He worked with Counselor Hensley to change a park ordinance to allow OLCC-supervised events inside our parks. When there was an introduced politically-charged resolution regarding some controversial gun legislation, he chose to abstain his vote instead of voting for or against it because he didn't feel like it was in the scope of city council, which is also what Rick Robinson said at the time. But also, it took, I think, a lot of courage to not get involved in ideological and political conversations, knowing that everyone would be mad at him regardless of what their political opinion is, because he didn't take a stand, but he cared about procedure. He recently worked tirelessly for months to get the utilities undergrounded on the Ivy Street project, and he allowed other people to take credit for it. When our interim city administrator declared that the quiet zone was dead because of bureaucracy, he reached out to our Republican House Minority Leader to light a fire under ODOT and get that project moving again. He has served as a parliamentarian for multiple organizations. He has a passion for helping counselors and citizens turn ideas into policy even when he doesn't agree with their ideas, because he believes everyone should have a chance to advocate for what they believe in. Like Council President Dale said, he has proven to be a visionary who understands that our job is both for right now and for 50 years from now. He has stepped up as a mentor to all new city counselors, offering to help them learn about the role. And he has a desire, history, and ability to be fair and open-minded without, with all counselors. Finally, he is, he answers everyone's phone call, email, or text. So he is accessible to all of us, even if he doesn't agree with them, even if he knows that the conversation will, will be more challenged because they're, they're not, have not come to terms yet on an idea, but he's always willing to answer a phone call, a text, or an email and have that conversation. And he's, he's unique like that on the board, because though we all have personal political opinions, he has never let that get in the way of how he represents himself for the city.
Okay. Counselor Bangs, you had some comments?
Well, yes, they pale in comparison to Counselor Spoon. So I would add that an appointment of, of Counselor Parker follows in the footsteps of Walt Daniels and, and Counselor Dale, who retired, in terms of the depth of experience. And, you know, I think it's important to state, I have not actually met Counselor Varwig or Counselor Hensley. I don't have any opposition to either candidacy for Council President, but I do believe that Counselor Parker has the greatest depth of knowledge and experience among all of us. And, and so that's how I, my vote is, at least at this point.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other discussion pieces? No other discussion. Okay. So motions on the table. Motion's been made by Counselor Spoon, seconded by Councilor Bangs. All those in favor of Counselor Parker as Council President, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Bangs? Sorry, Counselor Bangs? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Varwig?
Nay.
Counselor Hensley?
Nay.
Counselor Tibbles?
Nay.
Counselor Tibbles?
Yeah, I would kind of echo Bangs, Christopher Bangs' sentiment. I'm not necessarily opposing, I'm more, I think that for the comments that Counselor Spoon made, I haven't, I don't know Parker, Counselor Parker very well, I've never met him. He has also not reached out to me advocating for his position prior to this, so this is the first I'm hearing of him wanting this position directly from him. So I think that if it's something that he had wanted, to reach out to a freshman councillor, at least saying, hey, this is why I think that maybe I would be the best position and having that conversation and dialogue would have been helpful, I will give him credit. When I did reach out to all the councillors and asked if they had any advice for me as a new councillor, and they all responded, including Counselor Parker, so I do thank him for that, but I reached out to all of them. And I just think that there's someone who has great, the same qualifications that were already mentioned, and so I can't speak to someone I don't personally know. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of all working together for any period of time prior to this decision. And I think that that's important because I think maybe we could understand who each other are as we work together and maybe build those bridges of understanding how we can partner, but we haven't had that opportunity yet, which is unfortunate, but just the way that the time of terms work.
Counselor Hensley, Counselor Varwig? Care to explain the no vote?
The reason that I got into city council, and you can tell right now, Counselor Spoon shaking her head at me and she's not happy with me, wasn't to make friends, it was to do the right thing for the city of Canby. I have learned over the last couple of years, and somebody gave me some great advice one time and said, if you're not making somebody mad, you're not doing the right job. There comes a time when we have to make hard decisions, and we have to decide whether we're gonna make a decision based on friendships, or because it's the right decision. I have an immense amount of respect for Counselor Parker. I know for a fact that if I ever have a question, I can call him and he'll answer my question. I also feel that there's an agenda. And for that reason, it's my personal feeling, you can scowl at me or shake your head at me all you want, that's fine, that's my personal feeling. At the end of the day, I have to go to sleep at night knowing that I made the right decision. And in my gut, I don't feel that Counselor Parker is the right decision for council president. Still respect you, sir. I hope we can remain friends. Just in my gut, I have to make a decision based on my gut feeling, based on some text messages that I received earlier today, my gut says it's not a right fit.
Counselor Hensley?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do have to say, it's, in my many, many years of running meetings, it's unprecedented to make a vote explanation happen, it's usually voluntary, but in that, I will explain that I feel that I can run a meeting, I can lead the council, I have worked with both sides of the aisle, both on the council and in the county, and I think I have the experience and professionalism to handle it, and I want the position, so first I would withhold my vote for another candidate.
Okay. So we've gone down ideological lines, which was I was afraid of, and as I stated before we hit down this road, that I am a no. Is there another motion? Is there another person? Or are we just gonna end up going down this line again?
I would, I would make the motion that Counselor Hensley be the council president. I think it's only fair if we're going to hear one motion and then explanations that we hear others. And so I think, in the sake of transparency, then people who are advocating against or for Hensley deserve that right, just as you awarded Counselor Parker. And I can speak to Counselor Hensley that I have, she reached out to me expressing her desires as to why, I think that goes a long way with a freshman councillor.
No, we need a second before this?
Hold on, yeah, hold on, Jordan. Appreciate the motion. I'm waiting, is there a second for Counselor Hensley? No second for Counselor Hensley to be council president? Okay. Motion dies due to a lack of a second.
I move again to nominate Counselor Parker for council president.
Counselor Varwig?
Nay.
Counselor Banks?
Would we get an opportunity to discuss the motion as seconded before we vote?
I'm sorry, you're correct, sir, yes.
If possible, I would like to just add another position that I've developed here. I recognize that there are ideological divisions in this council, and that I'm not in the majority on that. And if Counselor Parker were to be elected council president, Counselor Parker would still not be in the majority. So the majority would still be protected. When I ran for office, I believed strongly, and still do, that the city gets encumbered too much in political party bickering. I think that we are better off concentrating on parks and potholes. And I think one way we can get around that is by dodging it in issues like this, where party partisanship, party politics shouldn't really enter the discussion. And so I continue to support Counselor Parker's nomination and election as council president for that reason, in addition to what I previously said.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Hensley?
I would just like to note that it's ideology, yes, we are split, we are also capable of working together, and the only, the nominations for Counselor Parker are the only ones that have been pointing out political party. No one has talked about party politics until right now.
And to be fair, I believe I did in my initial conversation about this, about being, and I know, looking ahead to the next two years, four years, five years, whatever's, you know, ahead of me as mayor, that, yeah, that there, this was gonna happen with this council. And that's where I brought it up, and I was, I'm not surprised that it's happening on the first night of the conversation. It's unfortunate that we're at that point, and I, so I opened that, that can of worms, if you will. So it wasn't necessarily brought up by anyone else, so I think I opened that door.
Well, if we want to talk about party politics, let's talk about party politics for just a moment, and my experience in party politics. It's no secret that I was once, I just recently retired as chair of the Clackamas County Republican Party, where I was chair for two terms and vice chair for a term. But in my tenure as chair, I called the Democrat Party of the county and had coffee with him, and we worked together on a solution for an issue that we had with the Secretary of State. So I've proven, not just in the city level, but also at the county level, that I can work with both sides of the aisle. Now, all that's to say, in city municipal government, there's not a lot of opportunity to influence by party. This is infrastructure, this is the potholes and the sewer plants and the, you know, who's gonna take away the poop to Rosenberg? That's what we talk about, that's what we're supposed to talk about. But when people try to bring social issues into it, then that's a different thing. And then we try to not have those conversations, but I do listen to the all sides of the story. And so I just, just don't believe that we should be having a party conversation. This is who can do parliamentary procedure, who can work with the council, and who can lead the council in your absence.
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the reason I brought up Greg's ability to work with all people regardless of politics is because you mentioned that as something that you felt like we should be looking for in a councillor, council president. So it's not, it's not about ideology, but if we're gonna look to that as something we're looking for in a leader, I think Greg has a lot of experience with that. I will say that he's the only councillor that I think answers everyone's calls and emails and texts regardless of what their political opinion is.
Any other discussion? On this particular motion? So again, our third motion of the evening, Counselor Spoon has nominated Counselor Parker to be council president, it's been seconded by Counselor Banks. Counselor Varwig, before discussion, you were asked and you said no, is that still hold true?
Still holds true, no.
Okay, Counselor Banks, yours, a yes for Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
My vote remains no.
Yes.
Counselor Spoon?
Yes.
And Counselor Tibbles?
My vote holds nay.
Can I make another motion?
I'm flabbergasted here, gang.
Can I make a motion?
I haven't rendered my vote yet in where we're at right now. I mean, again, it's a long, this ideological stance. How are we gonna get anything accomplished or work together as a team if you're gonna relinquish control to me every time? Is somebody, is there gonna be a movement from Sean Trace here, Jordan?
I plan to make a motion, but once we've done with your vote.
Excuse me, sorry. I'm sorry, you guys, this is unacceptable. I'm a no, I, we gotta, this is not how we should start off our year. We're really, I, somebody's gotta move.
So I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
What's your motion, Counselor Varwig?
My motion would be to nominate myself for council president. And I think that I've shown, and that I'm not looking at this along party lines. My fear tonight is losing a friend, and I hope that doesn't happen. But like I said before, my, and I can save this for discussion.
You've muted yourself.
Sorry about that, I can save it for discussion if I need to, but I think that I have proven that this is not about party line for me, this is about doing the right thing, and I'm just going with my gut tonight and making decisions based on what I feel is right.
Okay, so, Joe, are you there?
I don't know if anybody's made a second for my motion yet, though.
I know, I need to ask a question on it first. Joe, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had to work the unmute here.
So, help me out here, I've never been in a position necessarily where someone's necessarily nominated themselves, is that, is that a, I don't know, is that?
It's allowable.
Okay.
If, let me, let me answer another question because it sort of came up, and I was waiting to see what the outcome was, but in terms of if you've made a motion before, in order to make it again and vote on it again, it should technically be a motion to reconsider, and so it should come from somebody who votes no. So if you ever want to revisit one of these again tonight, if you've said no before, you can make a motion to reconsider, if that helps.
Yes, sir.
That would be parliamentary procedure.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Okay, so I guess we have on the table that Counselor Varwig has nominated himself for council president, is there a second? Motion fails due to a lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to make. It seems that folks aren't really confident, we have new folks on the board, and they're not confident in making a choice with people that they haven't worked with, so I move that we move this vote to the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, that is?
That was a motion.
It was a motion, you're correct. So the motion being made by Counselor Hensley to move this topic to our second meeting here in January, is there a second? Second by Counselor Tibbles to move this to the next meeting. Discussion. Counselor Spoon? You're muted.
Sorry, I looked through the charter again today, the charter is very clear that on the first meeting of every odd number year, we shall elect a council president, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable going against the city charter.
The city charter does say shall, there's a big difference between may and shall, so I thank you for that, I agree. So, we have some work ahead of us, perhaps. Counselor, yes, Counselor Banks?
Yeah, so would?
New councillor Bangs seems very adept at parliamentary procedure, I think that's the third time he caught us. I seems very adept at parliamentary procedure, I think that's the third time he caught us. I nominate Christopher Bangs for council president.
I second that.
You know, I was about to tell Counselor Hensley that I kind of liked the postpone it for a month plan, had it not violated the city charter. It's unexpected, if it's a way to get around a roadblock that we cannot resolve, then I would accept that. I do, I do have some familiar with parliamentary procedure, but as Counselor Varwig said, I think all of us probably could manage most of those tasks of council president adequately. But I guess I accept.
Okay. Okay, so a motion on the table right now is that Counselor Spoon has nominated Counselor Bangs as council president, and the motion's been seconded by Counselor Parker. Any discussion? Counselor Spoon?
I'd be happy to explain why I was excited to nominate him. I think that he's demonstrating great ability to understand that this isn't about ideology. He has a lot of parliamentary procedure experience or depth of knowledge around it, and he's a government educator. He has a deep understanding for how government ought to work and what happens when it doesn't work properly, and it sounds, looks like we could all benefit from that right now a little bit. So I think he's a great leader. He has a passion for working in our community, and as an educator, I think that he is kind of wired to help. And so I think he'd be an outstanding council president.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion regarding Counselor Bangs as council president? Okay. Okay, Counselor Spoon? Yea or nay?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Nay.
I'm sorry, nay, no or yes?
No.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Nay.
Counselor Tibbles? Second motion to nominate Counselor Hensley did not get seconded. Third motion, again for Counselor Parker, again, party lines. Pardon me, ideological lines, I think. Fourth motion for, to have Counselor Varwig to be council president, did not get a second. And here we are in our fifth motion, and we are again three-three along ideological lines, I believe. It's five motions, folks, and we've made no headway.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that your vote was in order...
It is in order right now. You're correct, and I've not rendered that piece yet. You know, we could be, or I think we're running out of city councillors, and according to Joe's recent piece, to bring back a previous motion would have to be from someone that had voted no before, correct?
I'm prepared to make a motion after you render your vote.
That is correct about what I said about the motion to reconsider has to be from somebody who voted no before.
I'm really out of loss here, guys. I can't do, we can't do a sixth motion, there's, I mean, there isn't...
Yeah, we can.
I have a feeling, Counselor Hensley, that the next motion will also go ideological lines.
I don't know.
There's, there's a real lack of, yeah, a real lack, a lack of something. I'm flabbergasted right now at this piece that we're three-three on a council president like this. So... Is somebody on a previous no gonna bring back a previous motion?
I'd like to reconsider the vote for Counselor Varwig to be council president.
There wasn't a vote, though, so how does that work?
I'd like to reconsider the motion. It died without a second, so I'm making a motion since I didn't second it last time.
Okay, so you're, so, Joe, I hope you're handy. So is that, Joe, are you there?
Yeah, I'm muting it.
So in this instance, does Counselor Hensley, does it act as a new motion since there was no second?
Clearly, they would be the one who's reconsidering voting yes, so that it doesn't waste everybody's time, so we don't do like fifty of these.
We're only at six, so we got a ways to go. Okay, so then it's, we treat this as a, as a new motion then, that Counselor Hensley is nominating Counselor Varwig as council president?
Yes, the way, because you let it die without a second, it's a new motion, and so it has to be seconded in order to be entertained.
Okay, so I guess we have a discussion. Yes, Counsel Tibbles?
I think in the spirit of the discussions we've had with other people who have nominated other councillors, I think we saw that Counselor Varwig was not willing to go just quote-unquote "party lines" as he did not support Counselor Hensley. And with his experience being on the city council and him staying true to not necessarily going party lines, I believe that is a compromise that everybody was looking for when speaking about what is a good quality in a council president. Therefore, I think that it would, I think we meet everyone's concerns and hopes for council president and Counselor Varwig.
Thank you. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, I, first, I want to say to Sean that what you may have interpreted in a text message earlier today as an agenda was actually me trying to not have to say this. But I have a very personal reason for not wanting Sean to be council president, and I'm sorry that it will be embarrassing, Sean, I didn't want to be in this position. But last, in 2019, we attended League of Oregon Cities together, about five of us did, and after, Sean and I were at a different hotel than the other three, and Sean had the city van, and after, when it was just, I'm not sure if we had just dropped you off, I'm not sure exactly of the chain of events, but, and I'm so sorry, this is really uncomfortable and embarrassing, but it has to be under consideration. I talked to Joe and Brian about this, that he asked me if I would go to a strip club with him, and I declined to do so, and then he took the city van there anyway, and I found it highly inappropriate, and I'm not comfortable with him as council president.
That is a false accusation. That is one hundred percent false accusation.
I'm gonna chime in here on a discussion piece here, that was interesting, because really, this, just last couple of days, I received a number of text messages and an email about the Westland City Council meeting and the, I guess popcorn and soda pop worthy viewing that it was, and I think we're treading into that territory, gang. And I don't think, Sarah, Counselor Spoon, I get where you're at. I took, if it's out there, it said, I'm just, I'm making, I'm putting it out there right now, so that it doesn't further degrade our abilities to represent and legislate as a council. I have a whole lot of, just, yes, so... So, okay, any other discussion regarding the motion for Counselor Varwig to be council president?
If I could comment, I mean, I obviously am new to the council. This was not my hopes, that it was going to become slander of people's personal lives. So I, I would hope that in the years to come, that Kambi deserves better than airing out people's or making false statements about people, and that we're here to do the city work. I think that we could have constructive dialogue about individuals' credentials in terms of their experience, and that's fair game. I just think that was uncalled for, frankly, and I hope we don't do it moving forward. I will respect anyone on any other side regardless of political differences, but I think we're all here stepping up to serve the community and airing out or making false statements, whichever, whichever one it is, because I wasn't, obviously don't know. I just don't think this is the format for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion pieces? All right, Counselor Banks?
This is, I agree with Jordan, this is descending into chaos on our very first time here. Do we have any other options? Short of the mayor casting his tying vote, which is called for in the city code, is it possible that the job can be shared or rotated? I know that the Kambi School Board has a rotating chairmanship, and they all take turns, I mean, my wild prediction here is we're looking at another three-three vote here, and I got nothing against Sean Varwig. He reached out to me when I was elected, I really appreciated it, we had a meeting set up, but, but, you know, we're going nowhere here.
Yeah, I mean, we have a motion on the table, so I gotta run that gambit, and there's a second on it, so... Counselor Varwig? Counselor Spoon?
Nay.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Tibbles?
Aye.
And Counselor Banks?
No.
Okay, so... I am also a no. So is there... Well, we're running out of candidates, so let me go ahead and nominate Sarah Spoon for council president. Well, sorry, Greg, Jordan had his hand up first, let me address that first, sorry.
I think we've, if we're gonna go, I think we should have the standard apply, that if we already heard Counselor Spoon's objections as to why, but you had us say why we had the nay votes for Counselor Parker, and I believe that would be only fair and appropriate for the other councillors to explain their nay votes, other than obviously Counselor Spoon have already explained hers.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Banks or Counselor Spoon, or Counselor Parker? On the no vote?
I have consistently wanted the person with the most breadth of experience to be the council president, and so, you know, I didn't want to be the council president either, and, and so, you know, and frankly, I think that we're playing a game of chicken, and, and I think, I don't want to play that game anymore.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parker?
Yeah, I agree, I don't see this serves any purpose.
So your votes against Varwig were for, end discussion, but we're gonna keep discussing? I'm not understanding that.
Sorry, Counselor Hensley, what's that, who's that directed to?
Well, I just, Counselor Bangs and Counselor Parker seem to want to end a discussion, and that, unless I misunderstood their message, it sounds like they voted no to, because this needs to stop, when the yes would have got us done. I don't understand.
As I said, I wanted Counselor Parker, that has not changed, that was what I said.
So what, how do we... So we've had Counselor Parker, Counselor Varwig, and Counselor Bangs nominated. How do we get to yes on one of those? What is it that those that have voted no, like, what is it you need to hear or say? Like, what is it? Counselor Tibbles?
I mean, I just want to reiterate a point that we already discussed, is that the worry was party lines, and Counselor Varwig had not voted for Counselor Hensley, showing that he was not voting purely quote-unquote "heart political ideology" lines. And I think that was a compromise that I believe I heard the other councillors who said no were looking for. And so I'm just curious if that still holds firm, or if that was not really the, so I would just ask, I guess, anyone who expressed that their concern was ideological lines, you have someone who didn't, and so he proved that that's not where his heart was.
How do we get to yes, gang? How do we get somebody like... Counselor Hensley, somebody give me some insight, please?
It appears to me that we may not want to get to a yes.
Well, as I stated at the beginning, my, so far it's been ideological lines, which is...
Let's try this again, I'll make a motion. Nominate Counselor Hensley as council president.
Motion's been made by Counselor Varwig to select Counselor Hensley as council president. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Tibbles. Any discussion? Okay, Counselor Varwig? Oh, sorry, just a second, Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, I think Tracy has a lot of experience, and I appreciate that. For me personally, just, I'll give you the reason for my vote ahead of time. I find it very difficult to get her to respond to phone calls, texts, or emails, even if it's about city business, but also, I object, you know, she talked about how we shouldn't be talking, shouldn't be dealing with ideology or social issues, but in 2015, she introduced legislation regarding the city's opinion, I guess, about gun regulation, which had nothing to do with city business, and even the city administrator encouraged the council to not vote on it, and I don't think that that's how we get to a council that works together or deals with exclusively city issues. So I have some concerns about that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon, just confirm it's a no?
It's a nay for me, sir.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counsel, Counselor Tibbles?
Aye.
And Counselor Banks?
No.
Counselor Varwig, where'd you go? You're muted, sir, thank you. Oh, this is unfortunate. I think, yeah, the only ones that haven't been nominated are Jordan... I think, yeah, the only ones that haven't been nominated are Jordan and Counsel Spoon. Though I think that they would. Gang, this is, this is really disheartening. That we're at this stage and at this point. We have other business to get to this evening, and it's unfortunate that we've got the stalemate that we've had now for seven motions. Five votes. I have. I, I had hoped that, that, that this was not going to be the case. I really do believe that the power of the council relies and rests with the council, not the mayor. Mayor is, mayor is, leads the meetings, sets the agenda, does the work. Hold on. Sorry. I'm being flagged by our city attorney. Just a second. Anyways, as I was saying, I, I really was hoping that the council would at least be able to work together behind something like this for everyone else. Or for someone. There was a four to two, five to one, something that wasn't along the lines of splitting, splitting the, the council this way. We're gonna continue to be this way, no matter what else is brought up. I, I, am I, is that incorrect in that summation? No one's gonna move, so. Then then, then I will vote for Counsel Hensley to be Council President. So that motion passes four to three. Thank you all.
I'm sorry that this has gone on so long, but I will work with you and do my very best to serve the city as well as this council. Thank you.
You know, I, I, I hope that that is the case. I really do. I, I had conversation with a couple of the counselors that feel that that's not always been the case. We have not had that. Perception is reality. Whether that's the, that truly is the feeling or it is not, that's what was perceived. Beginning of the evening, we have a lot of work ahead of us from a planning standpoint and looking into the future on what this city looks like, and it's gonna take all of us. And this tonight shows that I have a lot of work to do amongst the council. So in terms of making sure that these ideas that are brought forward, forward are flushed out well, so that we're not three to three in putting it in the hands of the mayor every time, because that's not where, that's not what our city asks us to do. I, Counsel Hensley, I, I hope that you do reach out and you build bridges and build census or consensus quickly and honestly, and and with integrity. And I hope that those that had voted no are honest in that process as well. I'm. Okay, so that's my piece on that. Moving on, the next agenda item is some exec session pieces, as well as trying to do, some exec session pieces, as well as trying to do some mutual pieces with the Parks Board. I'm envisioning probably another meeting with Bike and Ped. I'm envisioning another work session with the Planning Commission. Counsel Spoon and I had a great conversation over, I think it's, I exaggerate slightly, but the 14-page document that we have that is code changes that we need to address and shore up, so we're not I guess, taken advantage of. So, and it is honestly somewhat self-serving to go to 7:30, because a a start time of six o'clock is, coming from Hillsborough is tough, but it's doable, and going from six to 7:20 or 7:25 for zooming, looming, gives us more time to have those conversations than six to, six to seven. So I'm just trying to maximize our time with our work sessions and the time available on two Wednesdays a month, instead of going and trying to squeeze these into, you know, adding a third, a third Wednesday. So that's.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion for that, then?
Um, I don't know if we need a motion as much as I, it's just, it's a question I'm asking, so we would make it effective the first meeting in February, so it'd be pretty quick. So I'm bringing it to you, to you all as a conversation piece.
I would be willing to change it back to 7:30. This, I agree, the seven o'clock can be difficult to get to dinner, right off work, that kind of thing. And if I, memory serves, we kind of agreed to change it, because at the time, we were having some very lengthy land use hearings that were keeping us there till midnight.
Counsel Banks, nothing says like a, a good start to the school day, like being at a council meeting until 12:15. So, again, other thoughts? Something everyone's okay with? Counsel Parker, thank you. You're, you're okay with that? Counsel Spoon, okay. Counsel Varwig, Jordan, thank you, sir.
Can I interrupt for a moment? This is. So we've actually looked just as a double check. Melissa Vassett was all over this. We looked in Chapter Two, and in the start time in Chapter Two, so it's not a charter change, but it does say seven. So if you do indeed want this, we would have to bring you a ordinance in order to effectively change it.
Okay. So that, that means two, so next meeting, so we'd have to look at probably a March start to the seven, 7:30 start time?
And if, if we're finding consensus tonight, we can then put that together for you to go as soon as possible.
Great. So it looks like we have consensus to do that. If we can do that, that'd be great. Okay. Next up is City Administrator Business and Staff Reports. Mr. Archer. Hey, you're on camera. Look at that.
Here we are, with my mask on, because I'm in the room with, with Melissa and Joe. So following, following our rules here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. I do have just a few things for you. First of all, Happy New Year to you all and to, to Canby. And also, congratulations again, Mayor Hodson and City Councilors Hensley and Spoon on your reelections and your swearing in this evening. And also to our two newly elected city counselors, Banks and Tibbles, again, on your elections as new counselors and your swearing in this evening. I look forward to working with all of you on behalf of the City of Canby. And we'll be working forward together and hopefully doing good things. A couple of other things. One, I just want to let you know, I, as I had, I think I had announced to you previously in email form, but just to kind of confirm, our new Planning Director, Don Hardy, started with us this week. So on Monday, he began his service with the city, and we are very excited to have him here. He brings a wealth of experience, and I think he's going to do great work for us. I do look forward to him being able to meet with all of you and, and in our work going forward. I'm sure that you'll be hearing from Mr. Hardy sooner than later with all of the good work that we have ahead of us. And along those lines, I also want to say, say a huge thanks to Ryan Potter, who is our Senior Planner in the Planning Department, for leading our efforts in that area during our interim period where we were without a, a Planning Director. Mr. Potter did an excellent job for us and, and really carried a heavy load, because he was doing his regular job plus leading the department. So thank you to Ryan Potter. And then lastly, I didn't speak earlier under the ceremonial portion for our outgoing Council President Dale. I wanted to leave that to those of you that have worked with Mr. Dale for so many years, but since I have the floor for this portion of the meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge Tim's service to the, to the City Council and to the City of Canby for so many years. I, I only had the honor, the honor of working with Mr. Dale for a couple of months. But in, in a very short time, it became apparent to me, and, and as I know it is to so many others, that that Tim is, is and was an excellent public servant, served the City of Canby very well, and did so with, with honor. And I think he was highly respected because of that. So I thank him for that. And I also want to acknowledge that I'm, I'm honored that, that Tim was part of the, the council at the time that was entrusted me to bring me on as your city administrator. So again, I thank him for that as well. But thank you to, to Mr. Dale for his excellent service. And that concludes my report for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. I appreciate it. I, I know you had sent out to us. So for the general public in the council is aware of this, we've got a number of projects that have been preloaded and teed up that things are happening and whatnot. So I appreciate that, and I know Counsel Parker weighed in with some feedback on that as well. And I think that's a crucial piece for us to have, because we do have so many projects going on, and we're gonna add more, and it's important to keep track of where they're at and where they're going. So thank you for putting in that, that piece, or at least that cog of, of a system in this wheel. So I appreciate that very much on that front. Very excited to meet our new Planning Director. I think as Counsel Spoon and I were talking over the weekend in terms of something that'll definitely come up at our council retreat about housing, I think having his background from the private side, coming into the public sector, will be beneficial to us in that regard, as we start to look at and have conversation about housing, specifically that, I think that missing middle, I think Counsel Spoon and I were talking about, and trying to figure out how we address that here in Canby. So some very good staffing moves that we've done very, you're, you, not we, you have done very quickly. So I appreciate your work and the work of city staff and getting those things filled and getting those going. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next up is citizen input. Melissa, do we have anybody that's dialed in and wanted to address the council?
We do, Mayor. Jason Patton would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Patton, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I figured you've gone this long. Why not a little longer? So my name is Jason Patton. I am at 1040 North Birch Street here in Canby. And for many of you, you know I am a huge advocate of streets and the street maintenance fee here of the city. This was one to be one of the items that I plan to advocate for if elected to City Council, and so I will now push this as a concerned citizen. Since the inception of the street maintenance fee, it has never been adjusted compared to most of the other fees that are part of the city's fee billing. And so now until whenever, at least up until the Budget Committee meeting, you will hear from me on a regular basis advocating for that fee to be adjusted and tied to the fee schedule that all the other fees are a part of. Every year that goes by that you do not take action on this is another year that that money does not go as far due to the increased costs of labor and materials. So that is just one of the many things that I, as a concerned citizen, think you need to put on the schedule to address for the upcoming, at least for the upcoming Budget Committee meetings. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Patton, thank you for that. I know that you have been a huge advocate for that piece for a long time, and I know, so to address the, the road maintenance fee piece, in terms of how do we use that money to, we use that money to help keep our roads maintained and keep improving them. So so that is in the works, at least another funding source for transportation and roads. Much like the Library District, the, the road maintenance fee only increases each year by either more businesses coming in or more housing. So that's really the only way we see it, an increase in that regard. So I expect to see you more often.
Yes, if I may, to that point, there was, I don't believe there is anything when the original group met that says that that fee is tied to that. It was mentioned in a budget some years ago that the fee would be tied to a it was some sort of like construction.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that. To the council, thank you for the work this evening. Not easy, not pleasant in some aspects. I do hope that our future meetings go, go better. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Is there a second to that? I'm sorry, who, Counsel Hensley, was that you?
Yes, I can't get my mute button to work right tonight. A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Counsel Spoon and seconded by Counsel Hensley to adjourn. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. That passes six zero. Good night, Canby. Thank you.